I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education. May the board, in the unlikely event we have to evacuate the auditorium, please note the locations of the nearest exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Jordan Kukovich, who has to leave suddenly on Friday, May 6th. Please keep Jordan and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Before we get started, I'd just like to take note that trustee Uten was unable to make the meeting today. He was excused, so there's only one thing to say here, and that's that. 4.0, there are no presentations. We already had a bunch of presentations. Correspondence. We received a letter from Mr. James Weir on April 19th, 2016. 6.0, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular session on August 19th, 2016?
No move.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association who wants to address the board?
Yes, on behalf of the board, all the members and all the board members, we want to acknowledge that it's all the work and model of our business that we've been trying to write and make.
Thank you, Ms. Mercile. Anybody from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Yes, on behalf of the LCPA, obviously, we're in full support of budget. Three, five LCPA members made over a thousand phone calls this evening for support of budget vote upcoming. In addition, we also want to make sure that there's a lot of misinformation flowing around social media about the LCPA's position towards our support. We just want to make it public to know that the LCPA is not in support of Dr. Vallee Kukul as being related on social media or support of Dr. Vee.
Thank you, Ms. Mercile. Anybody from the Lancaster Association of Service personnel? No. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, 8.0, board reports. Does anyone from the board like to report on anything?
I will. I have a couple of different things that I want to share with the board. First is, last Monday, I had the opportunity to go to William Street School PTO, to sit in on their meeting and answer any questions regarding the budget that they may have had. It was quite a lengthy meeting, but it was very encouraging. And I just want to thank them for a thankless job. It is a volunteer position, but the time and energy and dedication to the kids of that school is amazing. The field days, the daring lake trip, fundraisers, organizing these events, and the collaboration. I'll do that, or I need a volunteer for this, well, I'll do it. It was just an amazing group of people that was very inspiring, so I just, my hats off to them. I wanted them to know how much we appreciate them. Second of all, I, as you know, am the representative for the Legislative Committee here on the board, and I work with other representatives from other school boards who discuss legislative issues. And one of the big things that we're working on is funding and getting what is owed to us. So I have a couple of things I want to share with you. One of the things that we're doing this summer is we'll be meeting this even through the summer to continue our work with our legislative team. And actually, we're going to be doing a little bit more than normal because it is election year, and we have the attention of legislators right now because they want our votes. So we are trying to get everything we possibly can. So we are planning things like breakfast with our legislators, to meet with them and talk about our concerns in schools and in education, and as well as funding. We're going to be putting a list together of representatives with their satellite offices to share with their PTA's so that they can share information with parents. The other big thing we're going to do is actually visit their picnics this summer as their fundraising picnics, because then we will also have their undivided attention. So we, as a group, have decided we are going to support and attend their fundraising picnics this summer. The other big thing is the veteran tax exemption. As you know, nothing is free, so even though we have our veterans, you know, our veterans do have this tax exemption, somebody is paying for that. And one of the big things that we are pushing right now is for the federal government to take some responsibility and this, and apply it to all veterans. If a veteran doesn't own a property, they're paying. They're not exempt from this. So in order to make it fair for all veterans, we're working on getting our federal government more involved in this exemption. That's some of the things that we're doing on that committee. We also work very closely, obviously, with NISBA, and some of the calls to action that we are doing in 2016 are pretty exciting. If you can take one, pass it down. I made a copy for each of the board members. These are things that we are working on. And I'm just going to highlight a couple, and you can read in detail for yourselves at your leisure. Foundation aid, right now, the increases in foundation aid have been very helpful, but they're a year-to-year, short-term distribution method. So NISBA is right now working to call the state to commit to returning the function of foundation aid formula beginning this 16, '17 school year. The GEA has been eliminated, thank you. And right now, the other push is to eliminate the law attached to it, because even though the GEA has been eliminated, the law is still sitting there. So at any time, their governor can reenact this. As far as career and technical education, students can now get a region diploma by successfully completing an approved industry-based exam in lieu of one of the region's exams. Right now, the NISBA is calling on the state to lift the cap on reimbursement of OSCE's aid to support the teachers, an increase in special services aid for the Big Five, and to continue to support tech schools and fund expansions of similar programs. It's pretty exciting stuff for our kids. Pre-K is another big one, and NISBA is right now is calling for additional funding to support these districts and end the reliance of grants. But they want to transition pre-K to more stable and consistent program, including busing for our four-year-olds. Just one other one, the school safety, obviously, is a big concern for all of us. And right now, NISBA is urging two legislative proposals. One, that I will talk about in a minute, two is individuals who make mass threats of violence against a school should be charged with felony. As of right now, it is a felony, and they are working on instituting that. Jamie, I actually have something for you. At our last legislative meeting, last Thursday, they have asked us if we could, I don't need it tonight, but make a list of four to five of our state mandates that cost us the most. And each district representative is going to bring our list of what costs us the most of these great mandates on us, and compile this list together. So I don't need it until next month, but if you could just need a couple that I could bring with me, I'd appreciate it. I'm almost done. Also, another interesting piece of legislation is there is a bill sitting in legislation right now that is, will amend the education law in relation to school buildings being used as polling locations. And this is to provide those public school buildings the ability to appeal their designation as a polling place. The justification raises as the following. There have been growing concerns regarding public school buildings being used as polling locations for non-district elections. When school buildings are used as polling locations, they are open to the public, and schools are unable to track who's accessing their facilities. Many school districts are concerned about the amount of unfettered access. Election Law 4-103.3 states that if a public school building is designated as a polling location, they are required to make available room in their facilities, with no ability to appeal this designation. But, on the other hand, if a public building was designated as a polling place, under this section, there is an appeal process. So we are now trying to push forward the amendment that would provide equity to public school buildings to appeal these facilities if we chose to. Right now, if it is deemed a polling place, our hands are tied. Oh, I had mentioned earlier about the NISBA supporting the bill about threats of mass violence on school grounds as a New York State bill. It has passed the Senate with a vote of 56 to 2. One of the roles, the other role I play on this board is the advocate for NISBA, and NISBA races out to us and asks us to pass along to you to support their mission. One of them is the government relations staff is now focused on moving it in the Assembly. It has just kind of sat there for a little bit, no movement whatsoever. So we are asking parents, teachers, community residents to encourage, to contact your Assemblymen and encourage them to act on this legislation, making any threats of mass violence a felony. Do it now while it's a hot topic and election term in the buffer. I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Christopher, for your service and all the information. Anyone else?
Just one thing. I was able to attend the Health Insurance Committee. You heard Jamie talk about how we self-fund our health insurance in Lancaster for the district employees. I've got to tell you, sitting through that meeting and a couple of meetings this year, you want to talk about a district that, you know, really looks to save money in any aspect that it can, I believe that Jamie and her team are doing an amazing job making sure that our costs stay really low. In fact, I think they're flat over the last three years, which is amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Sage. Anyone else on the board would like to comment? Seeing none, we'll go to 9.0, Superintendent's Administrative Report. Dr. Vallee.
Yeah, I had seven things, but they've already been commented on by Mrs. Christopher or Mr. Sage or Dr. Greeney, so I will just highlight two. Western New York Substance Abuse Awareness Forum, Lancaster is one of the school districts working with Senator Patrick Galvin, who is sponsoring a substance abuse forum on May 18th. That's next Wednesday, I believe, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Dupuy High School. This is a regional forum which is intended to be informational with presentations by health experts, law enforcement officials, and parents. Lancaster is partnering with the Senator's Office in promoting the presentation, which is timely and relevant for everyone. Please consider spreading the word on this important event, and if you have an opportunity or you're free that evening, please consider attending. May 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Dupuy High School. And it was mentioned, but I want to mention it, it seems to Wild back there, and I know he's very proud of this, but the reality is, is that I don't know if we really did due diligence, and I'd like to, but this is for the third year in a row, only three times in district history, three, the last three years. All of our varsity teams earned the required 90% team averages, came out just two days ago. I know we've talked about it before, because every season, when it goes to fall sports and then winter sports, they all, you know, they've made it. Well, our spring athletes just made it, and Lancaster Central School District will be honored as the NISBA Scholar-Athlete School of Distinction for the third straight year and the third straight time in school district history. To put this into perspective, last year, when we had only two years in a row, we were one of 28 high schools statewide, and you know there are thousands of high schools in New York State. And only one of three high schools in Western New York to achieve this distinction. Now being our third year in a row, I'm sure the field has narrowed even more, and I'd like to thank all of you, all the people who, you know, go on our courts and our fields and do all those great things. As a proud father and student, student athletes here in Lancaster, and a superintendent, I'm so proud of the student athletes, and equally as important, our staff, who always encourage them to be students first, and then after that, athletes. So that is led by Mr. Wild, who has said that over and over and over again, and I appreciate his support and leadership, and all the coaches that, you know, man our teams and do great things for our students. So it's a real weird conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Vallee. 10.0, old business. Anything to discuss under old business? Seeing none. 11.0, new business. 11.1, personnel items. Can I have a motion to accept the personnel change, 11.1.1?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.1.2, this is the appointment of our new Transportation Supervisor, Mrs. Judy Feldman. Ms. Feldman, do you want to say a few words?
Yes, I told her I would embarrass her tonight, so I had the opportunity to introduce to Mrs. Feldman to most of you before the start of the meeting. Judy is coming to us from the same department in the district. She has worked for the district since 1997, first as a bus driver, and then has worked as the head bus driver in charge of dispatch since 2006. She has become very well acquainted with the district's roads, ropes, and staff. She has always stepped up in the past whenever and wherever needed, and especially over the last few months, so we appreciate that. She's well-liked and well-respected amongst the department's staff. With her knowledge of the district, we anticipate a very smooth transition into the upcoming school year. I know personally Judy is very excited to be chosen as the new Transportation Supervisor. Lancaster is her home, her children attended Lancaster schools, and she has a lot of pride in the school district and the Transportation Department. She knows what it takes to run a great, efficient, and effective, and safe, most importantly, Transportation Department, and she looks forward to get started doing that.
I guess let's make it official.
Mr. Galvin, I'd like to move to appoint Judy to the position of, whatever. Head supervisor of the Transportation Department. This is what I had, I've known her for several years, and she's done fantastic job. Once again, we're very fortunate to have people within the system, within our school district, who can step up and do it.
Couldn't agree more. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I have to abstain. Judy is my next one, so I'll help.
Ms. Christopher, abstain. Family relation. So moved. Okay, 11.2, 11.2 point. Yes, so 5.01. 11.2.1, Committee on Special Education. Can I have a motion to approve the Committee on Special Education?
So moved.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.2, Committee on Preschool Special Education. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.3, this is a textbook proposal for Living in the Environment, which is a new textbook for a LEAP course. Can I have a motion to approve the new textbook?
No.
Oh, it's information, it is information, so no motion needed. Sorry, first time. All right, 12.0, Business and Financial Items. Can I have a motion to approve the financial items?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.2, Policy Adoption, 617, which is Safety of Students' Fingerprint Clearance of New Hires. This was read two more, or two previous times at our meetings, and it's now becoming policy. So can I have a motion to approve this new policy?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. The next two, 12.3, which is a second reading, Policy 55630, which is Facilities Inspection, Operations, Maintenance. And the second reading of the Policy 71, sorry, 7316, Student Use of Personal Electronic Devices, Bring Your Own Device, That's Information. And if we have no discussion, we will move to make that policy reading at the next board meeting to make it official. 12.5, A Contract. Can I have a motion to approve the contract between Premier Consulting Associates?
So moved.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Can I have a motion to approve the contract between Insight Brands Development, 12.6?
So moved.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Item 12.7, Surplus Items. Can I have a motion to approve the removal or dismissal of these surplus items?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Can I have a motion to approve 12.0, which is the Food Service Operating Reports for March 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to make a comment in regards to the Food Service Department. I'm so proud of them this year for the mere fact that this time last year, we were like 65,000 in the hole, and they've really pulled it together this year. They've really been watching the line, and my hat goes off to all the Food Service workers in the district.
Thank you, Ms. Mercile. Do we approve that? Those in favor of the operating reports?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Item 12.9, Girls Hockey Team. I believe this adds another school to our collection of female hockey players between Lancaster, York Point. Can I have a motion?
So moved. In fact, I can just make a statement, Mr. Galvin. This goes back many years, when parents from Lancaster wanted to have a girls' hockey team, and we were having a budget crunch at the time, but we worked with them, and we were able to put something together to have a team. And unfortunately, despite having a team, they didn't really do that well. And then, when they merged with their employee, they broadened the perspective for all the students, and later see Dupuy joining the club, so to speak. We're here to give children opportunities, and it would be terrible if a student at one of these schools couldn't do it because of the size of the school, and no one else was interested, or financial reasons. And I think merging the three together helps them financially and artistically.
I agree, Mr. Green, it probably also helps them to compete a little bit better as well, and I know they're at a disadvantage for some schools, drawing from six and seven schools, so. I add a motion, can I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.10, which is a contract between us and the Buffalo City Schools. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 13.0, which is the Public Hearing. We have a list of about, I believe, 14 or 15 people on the list. I'll quickly read the Public Hearing Statement. So, "Welcome to all those who've come to observe the meeting this evening. This time is outside for public hearing. At times, we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with you. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person who registered for Policy 1514 is given up to five minutes to which to address the board. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we're listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. We'd also like you to ask and demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. This policy will be strictly enforced, and anyone violating the policy will be recluded from addressing the board. Thank you for your cooperation." First on the list is Jaclyn Bull. Also, folks, when you step to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, and just thank you.
Jaclyn Bull, South of Caitlin Lane. Good evening. My name is Jaclyn Bull, and I am the Principal of William Street School. And first and foremost, I am a parent within the Lancaster community. My daughter Kristen will be graduating from Lancaster High School this June. When my husband and I moved to Lancaster in 1997, our decision was based on choosing a district that would provide our daughter a balanced education, a district that would meet the needs of all children, unaware of who she would become or what her needs would be. My daughter Kristen applied to one college. Some would say she put all her eggs in one basket. This was her dream school. She met with the admission counselor this past fall, and when I asked, "What does Kristen need to do to be accepted?", his response, "Nothing. She is the whole package." Lancaster Central School District is the whole package. The past 13 years, I have watched my district, our district, move to a top-10 rating academically, continue to rate fiscally responsible. Approving the girls' hockey team for two school districts, now three, Lancaster, York Point, and Dupuy, joined this one, and this I credit the Board of Education for investing in our biggest asset, kids. I am forever grateful to have a board and a superintendent that has and continues to support initiatives on all levels, academic, music, sports, the arts, special education, top-notch academies. In my daughter's case, she will leave Lancaster High School, and without a doubt, she will lead. This I owe to the students, the faculty, the staff, the coaches, the advisors, the numerous parent volunteers on district and school PTOs, the administrators from all levels, whom I am proud to call colleagues and friends. Dr. Vallee, you have and continue to create an environment that is supportive and always asking, "How is this good for kids?" In 2005, I was appointed the Assistant Principal of William Street, and in 2009, I became the Principal of William Street. Every day, the administrative staff, under the leadership and vision of Dr. Vallee, want nothing less than what we want for our own children. An outstanding education, where all kids can reach their highest potential. Dr. Vallee, thank you for your vision. To the Board of Education, thank you for investing in our students. Our students are our greatest assets. Our kids have and continue to make us proud on all levels, in the classroom, on the sports fields, musical performances, the arts, technology, and within and outside of Lancaster, through internships and volunteering their time to make a difference in the lives of others. I would like to conclude with all of us listening to the 2016 graduating class of Lancaster High School at their last spirit assembly this past April. Their voices reflect their years at Lancaster, many K-12, and the pride they feel. This is why we do what we do every day. This is about the kids. So I ask us, please, to join and listen. Many of us don't get to experience our own children, and I was very fortunate to be able to hear this and have this. This is our kids, your kids, 515 kids, Lancaster 2016 graduating class.
Next, we have Dakota Miller.
Good evening. My name is Dakota Miller. I live at two central road street in Lancaster, Maryland, and I am currently a freshman at Lancaster High School. I am here to talk about the designated parking space at each of the Lancaster schools for U.S. veterans. I collected more than a thousand signatures within two weeks in favor of having a veterans' parking spot completed by July of two thousand and sixteen. Of those people who signed, none of them used their excuses. None of them said, if we do it for this group, then we have to do it for another group, nor did anyone ask who will maintain the parking spot. The community said those excuses are ridiculous. All it is, is that the parking's based on our veterans. I collected the signatures because I think it would be a nice gesture to thank the veterans for their service. All of the supplies have been donated, and they are volunteers already for the labor. The cost would be nothing for the school. In a previous meeting, one board member stated, if the community wanted a veterans' parking space, you would listen to the community. Another board member stated, if the students brought it up, we would be more willing to pass it. I am a student at Lancaster, and I have collected over a thousand signatures from the community. So let Lancaster School District be the first district to honor the veterans. Let the other school districts follow our example. This should happen now. How come in the Sweet Home District, their Board of Education approved a veterans' parking spot in only one board meeting? They are graciously holding their project to let our district be the first school district to have a veterans' parking spot. Again, let our district be an example to others and be the first to complete this project now, not later. Thank you, veterans, for your service, and thank you, Board of Education, for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller.
Hi, Judy Woldana, and I live at eleven old schoolhouse row. I really just wanted to get out and thank all of you on the board for all that you do with the administrators. As we just finished up Teacher Appreciation Week, a big thank you to all the PTOs for all they did for not only the teachers, the aides, the social workers, the psychologists, and all of our buildings. And I personally would also like to thank all my team of nurses, as we head now this weekend to Nurses Appreciation Week, and on Wednesday, School Nurses Day, and if you'd indulge me just to list them all, because they're an awesome team, and without them, and all they do for the kids, they do a lot. Mrs. Dwan, who's at Como Park, Mrs. Smith at John Sholley, Mrs. Bacher, who is at Hillview, Mrs. Santoro, Mrs. Zegario at William Street, Mrs. Davis at the middle school, Mrs. Sepaglia at the high school, and we also service the three elementary, or the three pro教学 buildings in the district. At St. Arias, we have Mrs. Moreno at the elementary, and Mrs. Murphy at the high school, and Mrs. Hayden, who is at Our Lady of Blessed Sacrament School. And my most deepest thanks to Mrs. Parker, who is our district's float nurse, who has been at my back of the hall left and right this year for so much help she has given, at the drop of a hat. I thank them all, I thank the teachers, and again, I thank you all for what we do for the kids here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Molly Marsonelli, and I live at two seventy-eighth Paramount Parkway. I'm, as I said, I'm Molly Marsonelli, I'm the principal of Como Park, and I want to say, on behalf of all of the elementary principals, I would like to thank the Board of Education for crafting a budget that is extremely student-centered. We are very grateful, very, very grateful, that our concerns were heard regarding needing increased social worker support in all of our schools. As we have indicated, in recent years, we have seen an increase in students that require more assistance in social and emotional areas. While we have all dealt with many crisis situations as principals, we are not trained as social workers are. We know our limitations and are humbled by the exceptional work that our social workers do. We need the experts. In addition, I would also like to comment on how it is so gratifying to work in a district that continually puts children first, even when times are tough. This doesn't happen in every school district. Our district, with Dr. Bailey's outstanding leadership, a committed administrative staff, and the Board of Education's strong support, has not only kept programming at its current level, but has increased it. We are one of the few school districts that can boast very reasonable class sizes in our elementary schools. We have technology that exceeds many of the surrounding school districts. And we have the results that back it all up, and it's been said before tonight, and it bears saying again, ninety-nine percent graduation rate, unbelievable, zero dropouts, six in Western New York in business first rankings, and now I'm adding scholar athlete distinction that I just learned about tonight for the third year in a row. Well done, Lancaster. Even when we may disagree on certain topics, it is vital that we remember why we are all here, to educate students. Thank you to all of the Board of Ed members from the bottom of my heart for leading with the best interest of children always in your mind.
Caesar Marchioli, two primrose lawn in Lancaster Center School District. Good evening. Most of you know me as the principal of the high school. Tonight, I speak to you as a resident, a taxpayer, and a father. I would like to thank this Board of Education and this superintendent, who along with his staff are putting forth a budget that has the perfect blend of student support and fiscal responsibility. It is easy to see that not only are you keeping most programs in place, but you are increasing in areas of need. This is all being done while keeping the increase in taxes below the state tax cap. I have been a resident of Lancaster for over twenty years. I have witnessed the town and school district that have survived many controversial issues, such as the potential loss of sports and the closing of a school. Each time, the residents of Lancaster came together and found a workable solution. Why? Because while people might have disagreed on a micro level about certain specific issues, they have shown the ability to put these differences aside and agree on a macro level about the support for education and our young people. Some of these examples, some examples of this include, the community supports budget after budget because they are student-centered and fiscally responsible. The community supported the two thousand and twelve capital project, and the school district is completing the last phases of these infrastructure improvements this summer. Shortly, the district would embark on the exciting task of the almost fifty million two thousand and fifteen capital project that again, with the board and superintendent's leadership, secured unwavering support from this community. Our great teaching staff has been supported with many resources, including over twenty-five uncontrolled books district-wide and the training behind them. Students continue to excel in the classroom, on the stage, and out on the fields. While I hear sometimes how fractured the community of Lancaster is, these facts show the community is united as ever in our support for our young people. The Board of Education has voted seven-zero to support the budget that the superintendent and his staff have presented. I thank you for putting aside your differences on a micro level and focusing on the big picture, which is training our young people to be successful contributing members of American society. Twenty-three years ago, I moved here to become a resident. As I look back, I know that I would not change that decision, as Lancaster continues to be a great place to live.
Thank you, Mr. Marchioli. Just David here. Moving on, Terry Adamek?
Good evening. My name is Terry Adamek. I live at thirty-two Free Wood Drive. I believe I have a truly unique perspective of Lancaster schools, as I am one of the assistant principals at Lancaster High School, as well as the mother of two children. Tonight, I speak on behalf of myself, my husband, my two daughters, and all, just so you know, everybody attended Lancaster schools, two still attending, two graduates. We would like to extend our gratitude to the Board of Education, to Dr. Bailey, the district office staff, and the faculty and staff of Lancaster schools. For our daughter Tessa, who's graduating this year. Jack, you killed me with that. That was amazing. Thank you for the high-level curriculum she was taught in her formative years, as this allowed her to immerse herself in high-level coursework during her high school years. If successful in all her AP exams she is currently taking, she will enter the first year of college as a sophomore, saving her thousands of dollars. The courses have taught Tessa how to be a better manager of time, and how to study and research at high levels. Because Tessa took courses like this, she will be more than prepared for the challenges that college offers. Tessa was also a member of one of our esteemed academies here at the high school. These experiences have provided her with many tools, such as communication skills and other soft skills, that have helped her to land jobs and with her interviews for her college visits. Lastly, Tessa was a member of many sports teams. Without this opportunity, Tessa's leadership skills and collaborative skills would have gone unpracticed. The overall education Tessa has received from Lancaster schools through all of her years has made her a well-rounded young lady who isn't afraid to strive for her goals. We thank you all for that. Our younger daughter's story is just starting to be written. As a sixth grader, Joella is our singer, dancer, and gymnast, who strives to cheer for athletic teams. She's thrilled about entering the middle school, where she will learn Spanish and will continue to challenge herself academically. We are very excited about these new adventures, as Joella's path will likely take us down an entirely different road, and we will get to see what else Lancaster schools has to offer, and how they will help her to shape, to become the person that she is, or will be. In closing, there is no other school district my husband and I would ever choose to help educate and positively influence our daughters. They are better people because of the environment that has been created and sustained by the Board of Education, the superintendent of schools, and all Lancaster school personnel. This is a sincere thank you from two very grateful parents, and the Adamek girls. Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Denise Twinn.
Good evening. My name is Denise Twinn, and I live at one fifty-sixth Avenue. I am here to speak about bullying and how this behavior affects our world. My son has been bullied this year since the first week of school. I love my kids more than anything, and it breaks my heart to hear the detailed stories of what is happening in our school. As a mom, I want to hear happy stories, not stories of physical assaults perpetrated by another child, or verbal assaults perpetrated by a school official. After the first incident was reported, I was, I would have expected things to have changed for the better, not worse. Being stabbed by another child in the chest with a fork, not once, but two times, was one of the worst things I have ever heard out of my son's mouth. And unfortunately, this was only one of several instances of physical bullying that he has endured. Other incidents include tackling during football several times, when the rule is two-finger touch, hitting my son with a hockey stick in the face, removing the scooter from underneath my son while he was riding it, karate-chopping him in the stomach so hard he couldn't breathe. Why is this acceptable behavior in the eyes of school teachers and staff? For this to happen under the supervision of school officials, or in this case, lack thereof, is absolutely unacceptable. Bullying is not something that anybody should deny, having ever taken place in order to protect the reputation of the school. I'm sharing this with you tonight because bullying seems to be overlooked way too much at the expense of all our children. Kids are afraid to speak up or defend one another because they fear what could happen to them. Why is this fear in our school community? Lancaster is supposed to be a great school and something to be proud of. How can we be proud of Lancaster when bullying is swept under the rug over and over? Perhaps, school officials at William Street don't know exactly what bullying is, since it has been brought to their attention via phone calls, emails, and meetings. Perhaps, we as a school community need to better define bullying in order to recognize it when it happens, because if stabbing someone in the chest is not considered bullying, then we have some real problems. According to bullyingstatistics.org, in recent years, a series of bullying-related suicides in the U.S. and across the globe have drawn attention to the connection between bullying and suicide. Though too many adults still see bullying as just part of being a kid, it is a serious problem that leads to many negative effects for victims, including suicide. As a result of poor procedures and lack of communication, my son is now being bullied by school officials in gym and in the lunchroom. Is this how we react to a victim who had the courage to speak up about multiple physical assaults during school hours? As a parent, I am more disappointed at the adults who work side by side with my son every day than I am with his bully, who is a child himself. These adults continue to intimidate, humiliate, and verbally harass my son because he found the courage to speak up and ask for help. We cannot let this continue. These kids are our future, and one day, we will need them. We need strong, confident leaders who have qualities like honesty, compassion, and kindness to make this world a better place to live. This is not how we succeed in making them leaders. Ladies and gentlemen, we need a better plan, because even the smartest kids in the world could have their success demolished if they are bullied so much that it lowers their self-esteem and their self-worth. Schools need to be proactive and work together with parents to teach all of our children how to be leaders and not bullies. Be a friend, not a bully. If children live with hostility, they learn to fight. If children live with fairness, they learn justice. I taught my son to never put his hands on another person, and he has demonstrated that lesson over and over again. Whenever he was physically assaulted, never once did he react, as most would with violence. Why did the school fail to protect him over and over? I am beyond furious over this reaction from the school and the district office. And when teachers and school officials deny a problem or participate in bullying... And when teachers and school officials deny a problem or participate in bullying, where do kids go to seek help and protection? I suggest that we...
Mrs. Flynn, thank you so much for coming to speak today.
It has not been five minutes. I timed this. I suggest that we bring outside sources in and add them in. Kids need to have a voice. They learn from example, and what are you teaching them?
Mrs. Flynn, we have to stick with the policy of what? Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Mrs. Flynn. Dee Miller.
Dee Miller, fifty-five Gale Drive. First of all, I'm just a mom. I don't work for the school. I really only participate when I, when time allows with my kids, so this is just observations based on, these are concerns based on my observations with the school. I hear and read the bickering on issues that have nothing to do with education. I shake my head at comments on social media pages where concerns with ousting the school board outweigh concerns for our kids to thrive academically and socially within school walls. We are more passionate about being right on whether we need a special parking spot than we are about the children's education and safety. Every single day, there are kids, as Denise pointed out, that wake up and dread walking through school doors. And every morning, there are parents who pray, who pray that our kids will have a good day. Or at least tolerable. If you are one of those parents, consider yourself lucky and consider your children lucky. In addition to the bullying, our kids are sexting at an age when we were still playing with fireballs. They are injecting their bodies with poison, and sometimes, intended or not, losing their lives before they've ever begun to live. And now we take sides on parking spaces and logos and who is to blame for what. Our schools are only as functioning as the community in which it sits. We need to stop attacking each other and really start working together to save kids and keep our children safe. But before you blame the teachers or the board members or the superintendent, go home and take a good, long, hard look at yourself and what you are teaching your kids. Not by your words, but by the way you act and treat people who may not agree or may be different than you in some way. We need to teach our kids why we are different and why all kids may not have a thick skin, as I've read so much on social media. We need to educate our children that it's not good enough to just not be a bully, but to practice inclusion and foster relationships between kids that are considered normal and those who may have a developmental disability, such as my son. We do not practice inclusion. We are reactive, not proactive, and it goes on as it always has. Schools alone can't provide a solution without the help of the parents in the community. I have researched groups and individuals who come into the schools and they speak with students about the hard things that quite honestly didn't exist twenty years ago. The gentleman that I'm speaking with and the gentleman I provided information to you on is a well-regarded speaker and has had documented results on reaching students across the country. I have been communicating with him via email, on the phone, and I believe it would be a welcome asset in our goal to reach all of our students. Assemblies are tailored per age on the student body and teaches the students the differences of children with disabilities, to promoting inclusion, to cyberbullying, and of course, hard topics such as heroin, death, and suicide. Hard stuff, but it's not going away. There is a fee associated with this service, and the hope we don't have to argue over a budget or lack of, the cost will be covered completely by the charity that I run. I ask that you consider my offer to both the school and the community. And before I, reasons I have a few minutes left, maybe, one, I just want to say that I genuinely, I have no issue with the board, the teachers. Janelle's principal is sitting behind me from last year, and I couldn't be more grateful for her patience and understanding. I truly believe that we need to start teaching these kids when they're young because not all the parents are doing their jobs. They're not. And we have to do something as a school district and as a community to make this all go away because it's just not going to go away by blaming the teacher or you or the principals. It isn't. They are responsible for how we raise our children, and they do their best to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Monica Dagler.
Monica Dagler, two-four-three-two King Fisher Lane. My name is Monica Dagler. I'm an assistant principal at Lancaster High School. In my three years in this position, a couple of things have really stood out to me that I want to expand upon. Having come from Erie One Bosse's as a professional development coordinator, I had the unique opportunity to see over twenty-one school districts. Lancaster always stood out to me as a forward-thinking, innovative, yet down-to-earth district, and that's really what drew me here. But it wasn't until settling in here that I realized why. In Lancaster, the support for teachers and administrators has not only been unwavering, but has been both focused and deliberate by district office administration and staff that has been consistent. This consistency has afforded the district with a shared vision that has depth. It's not superficial, flavor of the month, or initiative of the month. The focus of this district has been and continues to be student-centric in supporting teachers and administrators in instructional practices and curricular offerings that help students of all levels be more engaged in school and ready for their next challenge. I love that the focus of Lancaster has been on the whole child and programs that support all the needs of our students. I have always felt supported, and that does not happen without intent. I want to take this opportunity to thank the Lancaster Board of Education, the superintendent, the district office staff for your supportive programs, supportive students, teachers, and administrators, and your vision for making this school district one of the best in Western New York. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dave. Jamie Parnik.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Parnik, eighty-three Treehitter Road. I've been fortunate enough to work in this district as a teacher and now in my role as assistant principal at the high school for about a combined eleven years. I grew up in the Kenton District. Many of my friends, family went through the Kenton District. I moved to Chieftain Wago when I was younger, married man with my wife and my two children. My children spent time in Chieftain Wago's Slough School District. I worked at a school that worked to serve children with various special needs. Ever from Barker to Buffalo, Lackawanna to Grand Island, all kinds of school districts from all over Western New York. I've also worked with many administrators and staff at those schools. I now live in West Seneca. The circumstances dictate that. My wife wants to be closer to her family. I've had a unique look at the West Seneca School District and Orchard Park School Districts. I've made many friends, acquaintances, and colleagues from all over Western New York in different school districts, and not one of them will ever let me forget how fortunate I am to be where I am. In my time here, I've witnessed this district and its students continue to strive for excellence and evidenced by historically high graduation rates, record scholarship numbers, numerous awards for academic and extracurricular achievements, and a steady and consistent rise towards the top of the list of Western New York school districts. All of this, I believe, is possible because of the continued support and efforts of the school board, both past and present, and the steady leadership and guidance from our superintendent, Dr. Vallale, and district administration, the execution of our building administration, the tireless efforts of our talented and dedicated teaching staff, the unwavering determination of our student body, and the tremendous support from the parents and residents of this community. At the heart of what makes this all work is truly a collaborative effort of all stakeholders in this room. I just mentioned, and most importantly, I believe, the continuity and stability that exists from top down. Lancaster continues to adapt to countless educational reforms thrown at it, yet results continue to improve. Financial hurdles created by gaps in funding exist year after year, yet progress continues forward. At virtually every turn, challenges are thrown at this district, yet year after year, programming is unchanged. It's even enhanced, and opportunities for students continue to increase. Thank you to the out-of-the-sport, our superintendent, Dr. Vallale, district and building leadership, teachers, students, and this community for always placing the focus on the most vital assets we have, which is our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parnik. Now, students will call.
Dear esteemed board members, thank you for your time as we approach the vote that's coming next Tuesday. Very important vote on the budget, and who will be sitting on the board, the new members. Though the residents of the Lancaster School District were not given the opportunity to decide the transgender issue in a vote, I believe a representative number voiced their opinion in applause at the December seventh, two thousand and fifteen meeting when I suggested that the people vote on that issue. It has come to my intention that the board may decide the issue following next week's vote. If that occurs, please remember the privacy protection and majority rights for fifty-six hundred students who are not transgender. Please consider the emotional distress, stress of biological females as they fear being caught alone in a restroom by a male predator who may say that they are biologically what, a different than their gender, who have been gained, who have gained access. Women and children accosted by strangers, and this happens. One in eight, one in eight women across the land by strangers have the most to fear in such situations. You are commended for taking a good amount of time to think through a decision on this policy. Hopefully, you have found a way to sensitively consider the rights of the handful of students who identify themselves as transgender without violating the rights of the thousands of others. As you have likely heard, fifty families in Chicago Suburban School District are taking their board to court after failed attempts to reason with their Board of Education as to why a transgender policy should not be implemented. The state of North Carolina has spoken against such a policy and is bearing the brunt of activists so as to realize their position is difficult. I realize it is difficult for you in such a hot-button issue. Since it is not an actual law in New York State, it appears you would not need to implement the policy. Thank you again for listening and for considering the opinions of the people I represent as their passion. Thank you.
Greg Soika. Last on the list, Mr. Tom Murphy.
Good evening. My name is Tom Murphy. I live at ninety Impala Parkway in Lancaster. I've been a teacher in Lancaster for the past twenty-eight years and the coordinator of our alternative program for the past six. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education and Superintendent Vallale for supporting the Lancaster Evening Alternative Program these past six years. The LEAP program is currently in its sixth year of existence. This year, we are on track to graduate up to fifteen more students in June. We're hopeful. Our total graduation rate over the past six years of existence is over eighty students, or an average of about thirteen students per year. Each of these thirteen students per year has a unique story to tell of how they had lost hope in the system due to a variety of reasons. Regardless of the reason, LEAP was there to give these students an opportunity to be successful and to keep hope alive in their hearts and in their minds. The primary academic goal of our program continues to be to provide an environment whereby students have an opportunity to be successful, success being measured by graduation rates and passing of New York State Regents' exams. The primary social and emotional goal of our program continues to be to provide a learning environment whereby students feel safe, welcome, and able to participate actively as a meaningful member of the group. I believe over these past six years, we have been successful in assisting many students, many of our at-risk students, to realize their transition goal of work, trade, school, military, or college, due in large part to the support we have received from the Board of Education and Dr. Vallale. Dr. Vallale's vision of doing, quote, "doing what is best for each individual child" continues to be realized through our graduation rates, test results, and most importantly, the hope our students have for a better future having earned their high school diploma. On behalf of these eighty-some students who have or are about to graduate from LEAP, I say thank you to Dr. Vallale and to the Board of Education for providing them with this very important opportunity. Thank you very much.
That concludes our public hearing section. Future presentations before we break into executive session. We have the annual budget vote and school board election on Tuesday, next Tuesday, May seventeenth, from seven a.m. to nine p.m. at the John Jim. May I have a motion to go on executive session to discuss panic litigation index number fourteen CB zero zero nine three nine and to discuss the superintendent's hearing evaluation? Those opposed? So moved to go over to executive session.